Good evening and welcome to the March 9th meeting of the Merrimack Town Council. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy Murphy is on her way in. She's running a little late coming down from Concord. And Barbara is excused for this evening's meeting. Upcoming council meetings, we'll have on Thursday, March 16th, we have a non-public meeting scheduled. And on Thursday, March 23rd, we have a regular meeting. Important dates to remember, Wednesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM in the All Purpose Room at James Mastecola Upper Elementary School located at 26 Bevysk Lake Road is our deliberative session. And Tuesday, April 11th, from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM is our annual meeting day. And if you have to find your polling locations, you would do so at the town website and that'll direct you, I believe, up to the state.
Correct.
Or you can call Town Hall and they could help you out too. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, if this was a plane, they'd make you people, everybody re- receipt because it's all cop sided. I'm here by myself tonight. Dog licenses are available at the town clerk's office. Owners must present a valid rabies certificate and neutering or spading certificate if applicable. All dogs are required to be licensed by April 30th. The computer server in the town clerk's office will be replaced on Friday, March 17th. Replacement is expected to be completed by 1:00 PM. During the replacement process, the town clerk's office will not be able to process any motor vehicle or dog license transactions. The office will reopen for business as soon as we can, once the replacement is complete. Due to vacancies within the town clerk's tax collector's office and the need for staff to be at the polling locations, the office will be closed on Election Day, Tuesday, April 11th. The media division, from the media division, Merrimack's ice hockey tomahawks won their Division II NHIAA semifinal playoff game on Wednesday night in overtime, a 4-3 victory over St. Thomas Aquinas High School. Merrimack TV covered the game live and it's available on their YouTube channel or cable channels to watch. Merrimack TV will record the state championship game this Saturday, but are awaiting permissions from the NHIAA to provide live coverage of the game. Thank you.
No recognitions, resignations, or retirements? I apologize. No appointments in this evening. We have a public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing to consider the recommended changes to Chapter 180, temporary sales, locations, and vendors of the town code pursuant to Charter Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, at the last meeting, we reworked the temporary sales and location for vendors ordinance. Besides some, correcting some spellings and adding some words of designees and yard sales. The biggest change to this ordinance is multiple location licenses. Vendors may apply for multiple location license for the purpose of vending from one specific cart stand or vehicle in multiple locations. Applications for multiple location licenses must be only made at the time of the vendor's initial application for the license year. Vendors must first purchase an annual license for one location. Second license shall be $100, third license, and thereafter shall be $25 for each location. Vendors must give Merrimack Police Department at least a 24-hour notice before commencing sales activity. I spoke to another vendor who came in and I explained this to him. And he's, he, after I explained it to him, said, "So, you're telling me that I still have to buy an annual license? My second location is this. My third location would cost me that?" I said, "Yep." He goes, "That's awesome. Thank you for thinking of that." Because it really will make their lives easier because they don't have to run back every time they want a license. And the other big change in this ordinance is that we are doing a year beginning April 1st through March 31st. So, all yearly licenses will be on the same cycle instead of throughout, scattered throughout the year. The one question that was asked by the council last time was pertaining to liability. What we got from our lawyers is that, basically, is, can the town be liable? Yes, if we don't do some due diligence. Meaning, if we don't ask the vendor questions and make sure that he's doing it. Because if he's not gonna do it, then either we force him to do it or tell him, "No." So, that's what the, that's what the attorney said to us.
Refresh my memory, Paul. That had to do with if there's someone organizing a group?
Yes, that's somebody's organizing a group.
And that person is going to be responsible for making sure that the background checks are done?
Yep, and approvals and all that stuff.
So, the question was, are we liable having that group leader or whoever?
Right.
Organizer?
Right. We just need to do some due diligence on that.
Which would involve what?
Asking the questions, "Did you, did you, did you perform the background checks?" And having them sign an affidavit saying they take full responsibility and they did that.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that'll be part of the application process?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Are you all done with the changes?
That's all.
Now, I know that I have IRSAs in here.
Correct.
I have heard, and I'm sure it's not done yet, but I've heard that the state is considering nulling out these types of licenses.
Hocker peddler.
Hocker peddlers.
Licenses.
Is that, does that, does this sound familiar to you?
Yes, they, they did have a hearing up in Concord. It's going for a vote, but who knows?
But that's only state.
That's, yeah, state. The town, it doesn't preclude the town from doing, doing what they need to do.
So, we would have to revise these if in fact the RSA has...
That is correct.
Okay. So...
It's like any RSA that passes, that we have an ordinance that talks against the law, we'd have to revise.
Thank you.
Second time tonight. I've opened the public hearing at 7:08 and nobody is here this evening to speak, so I'll close it at 7:09. And it's a pleasure of the council.
This needs to be moved to a third reading. Move that we, move, I'm looking for what it is, the...
Temporary...
This is going to the next, Chapter 180, Temporary Sales, Locations, and Vendors of the Merrimack Town Code to a third reading slash consent agenda.
Motion by Tom Koenig. Second by Nancy Harrington. Any further discussion? See, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It's 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for that work on that.
Next is legislative updates. Seeing none, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One big town manager's report. We received final approval from the governor's office for the PFAS mitigation grant funds from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Sciences to be used towards the reimbursement of the $6,500 for qualified homeowners to install either a point of entry, a point of use, or connect to Merrimack Village District water system. This is a reimbursement opportunity and will be available first come, first served basis and only as long as the grant funds are available. Merrimack private well owners PFAS grant reimbursement program applications can be found on the homepage of the Merrimack, Town of Merrimack's website at www.merrimacknh.gov, where you can contact the town manager's office at 603-424-2331 to request an application to be mailed to you. And just of note, we've been getting a lot of phone calls from outside of Merrimack residents because of the contamination area. And what we tell these people is that there is an inner circle and there's an outer circle that is supposed to be provided by St. Colbin. Everything outside that area, you can go to the state of New Hampshire and ask for reimbursement to, of one of these systems. There's also other money that is available if the communities want to extend water to certain locations in town for PFAS mitigation. So, there's a lot of money out in, up in Concord for this PFAS mitigation. And I heard there's another bill down in Washington now for PFAS mitigation for, for New Hampshire. So, there's a lot of money out there. If you have any questions, contact my office. We're getting, we're getting back up to speed on this. It's been a while because the grant took almost six months to get approved out of the, out of New Hampshire. So, we're, we're getting back up to speed on it. But you can contact us, you can go on our, our website, or you can actually go ahead and call the state of New Hampshire and they'll direct you to your best options. We're offering up to $6,500, $6,500 for, for the mitigation of, of entry, point of entry system or point of use system, whereas the state's only doing a $5,000 reimbursement. So, people with that extra $1,500, the state's been sending them back to the town. If they're connecting to Merrimack Village District, there's up to a $10,000 through the state. You can get up to $10,000 where we're still capped at $6,500. So, there's plenty of options for people out there to, that would have to research. But if you have any questions, please call my office and we'll get you the answers best we can. Thank you.
Paul, do we, I know we were highlighting a lot of the PFAS information right on our webpage in the front. Are we still doing that?
Yes, it's actually at the top of the webpage. I took the liberty today to remove COVID-19 and the grant application was put right there. So, it's right at the very top of our webpage.
Perfect. Thank you. So, easily findable.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Findable. 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 That's a scientific term.
Thank you much. Thanks, Paul. There's nothing on the consent agenda. Would I?
You, you're the chair. You can do anything you want.
All right. You want, ready to go? What I'd like to do, I think the town moderator's here for number three.
You'd like to move that out?
I think so, yeah. Is that, that's, I presume I... Yeah, so, all right.
Without objection.
And I, I should have announced, done this during the announcements. And Nancy reminded me and of course I forgot that our meetings for April, it's for you guys. Okay, she didn't hear earlier. We're gonna have one meeting on April 20th as opposed to our usual two, and it'll be on April 20th.
Instead of the 16th?
Instead of, in 20, in 27 through, yeah, instead of 30 to 27.
Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening.
What would you like to know?
So, what we're really looking at is that to give the council an opportunity to go over these seven? Five, sorry, five. No, seven. Seven warrant articles and give, to just figure out who is moving them. Yeah, first one they don't go on. Who's moving the articles and who's gonna second the articles to talk to during deliberative session? So, the first warrant article is the operating budget. And usually in years past, that's done by the county council chair and the vice chair.
And now the second.
And then, you know...
And Article 3 I would like to do, which is the capital reserve, reserve funds?
Or general funds?
Miscellaneous ones.
Article 3, because Article 1 is the actual election.
Right.
Article 2 is the budget finly and a second. Article 3 has to do with the capital reserve trust funds, which I'd like to do if possible.
And Lynn spoke of interest of number four.
Who's gonna second?
Okay, Koenig.
Then Lynn, as you said, Lynn talked about number four, which is the water capital reserve fund.
And did you wanna, who did?
Lynn.
Lynn, okay.
That leaves Andy as a second.
Yes, you have seconded that one. Sure. Which one? Four?
Four.
Lynn, you second.
I'm just spreading the wealth.
And then number five is the first, the contract agreement.
We can always volunteer, Barbara.
We, we can.
She would do that.
She would do that.
I'm not moving one yet, so I have to move that.
Sure, okay. And why don't we do Barbara for second? Give her a second.
And then we have the supervisor of police and fire union.
Why don't we do Haley? To make it? And we can do Murphy to second.
It's dangerous when you're not here. And then we have the last one, the DPW worker contract.
Nancy isn't doing, Nancy Murphy's not doing one.
That's what I'm doing. Right now, she's doing one.
Well, we also have Tom. If Tom wanted to move any of these.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm seconding. There's only six of them either, five or six.
Yes.
So, do you wanna do Article 7 and a half?
It doesn't matter.
All right, Tom.
I can.
So, Koenig and Murphy. So, Nancy Murphy can second two of them.
Okay. And that is March 15th, Wednesday. And it looks like we might get a little bit of snow in the morning, but we're supposed to clear up.
New Hampshire.
This is New England. You never know.
New Hampshire's hard to make. Get over it.
And if it does, yeah, what's your point?
A little bit.
It's better than 48, right?
You'll be getting a list from us. Ask you who's gonna be where.
I already got it. I already have it.
Well, you have, you have who's... Oh, I'm talking about elections. I'm sorry. I meant, I meant, I was ahead of myself.
We'll deal with that next month.
I meant election. You'll be receiving.
Yes. Who's gonna be where, when?
Yes.
That'll be good. Was there anything we should know?
Normal Merrimack rules. Run it just like we've always run it. Everybody's used to it. Everybody falls in line and I don't see any...
You're talking about deliberative sessions.
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the way we have always, always done it and we should be out of there fairly quickly.
You just cursed us.
The...
That only works if a counselor says it.
Yeah, the last three articles cannot be amended.
Correct.
Right.
The first three can.
Correct.
So...
Well, good. I don't know how to record it. It should be quick.
For the, for the election, you're not gonna come back before the election, right? So, is there anything we need to know about?
If you want me to, I can. But they're gonna run the same way we've run them all, all along. You've got three places. I've got moderators at all three places. I've got ballot inspectors. I've got supervisors. I've, everybody knows what they're doing. Lot of them are the same people.
Is there new stuff with provisional ballots or something like that?
Yeah, and we're gonna have to deal with that, but that's, that's still kind of playing out.
Okay.
I would...
That's not gonna involve the council per se?
But I would suggest to people that they bring their ID.
It'd make life easier.
It sure will.
And all of that still is in play. You still need a license.
Yep.
Or photograph if you don't get one, don't have one.
Yep.
Just trying to bring it all up for those people that do watch.
Once it, once it kind of solidifies as to how we're handling it, I may come back to you just before the election and say, "Here's what's gonna happen, folks, if you show up without your ID."
That's different.
Do we have the 23rd?
Yeah, it's gonna be...
It's gonna be, because we're not gonna have that meeting.
23rd?
Yeah, because we're not gonna have a meeting.
Beginning of April? Okay.
The first meeting in April.
I'll put it on my calendar.
So, two weeks, yeah.
You good?
We're good. They're all set. Thanks, Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, I do have some handouts for the people who are moving those articles, Nancy and Lynn. Those are self-explanatory. But for the union contracts and the budget, I do have a handout to give to everybody.
Thanks.
So that we can sound intelligent or?
Yeah, how come he never did that before? I can prove every year.
Three years.
All right. Next is, first under old businesses, the council review and discuss the towns, Town of Merrimack's naming policy. Which you had started, you have a discussion when I was gone on this?
Yes, we did. Took the council's comments about benches and I added a section, Section D. Basically, and it states that for all other benches wooden or composite, bench surface shall be smooth, boat maintenance finished, finish, and to withstand the elements, seating, seating surface shall be 15 inches by 60 inches. Donor may request where the bench shall be placed from the available areas depicted in Apocall Park map. A donor does not, if the donor does not choose the location, a location will be chosen for the bench. All benches must be pinned to the ground. And if you're engraving, the same engraving that you would do on a granite bench. I ran this policy by Councilor Haley. She reviewed it, made her edits and changes in it. I incorporated those in there. And basically, the policy is, is for benches and placing trees. The council asked to reduce the size diameter of the tree and I put, must be at least two or three inches or greater in diameter for a tree.
That was the only change I was gonna suggest, two inches or greater, because two or three.
Your three doesn't mean anything.
Right. So, that's all, two is good.
It's just confusing.
Two inches or greater, okay. That's fine.
Yeah.
I think the or came in after we, we did the two. It was two or three. It was six at the beginning and then somebody said two or three.
Two to three is what I was gonna suggest.
Two or greater. Right. And the reason, and the reason being is that we don't want, you know, seeds or saplings because they won't last. They won't last and then the town will be on the financial hook to replace those trees if something happens during a 380 tree.
Well, then maybe that should be part of the discussion because I, well, two inches or better has got a great likelihood of survival.
Yeah, survival, right.
I guess it's not really a necessary discussion, but...
That's why I wanted them a little bigger.
Yeah.
Than a, than a sapling.
I wouldn't have imagined the town would have been on the hook for that, but I think a two inch or greater tree is hardy enough.
We, we have replaced some that have died.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so... And that, that was the other one. And I added the word for plaques. You know, historical signs. Placement of historical signs as well. That was something that was brought up when we last discussed this. So... That has to be approved by the council. Historical sign is placed in town.
This has come up. I would have brought it up earlier, but of course Representative Nada and Boyd had brought up, wanted to revenge for my husband. Those three. And one thing, he received a plaque from the Yakubov. Remember the first volunteer Yakubov?
Merrimack Rocks. Merrimack Rocks.
Merrimack Rocks. And it was a nice plaque and it had stuff down on it. And I'm thinking to myself, you know what? It would be nice if you could embed that. Instead of having engraving, just embed, just the, not the whole plaque, but just the very top of it into the seat and just have it covered. Is this, would this allow that if it were possible?
If it was possible, yeah, it could.
It would. So, it doesn't say engraving, but...
No.
Because it has all the information and more. And, you know, what am I gonna do with a plaque?
No, but...
And it says that he was a state rep. He was a state rep and what he did, it's very nice.
If it could be incorporated, that would, I don't know if it can be incorporated in a granite bench.
I don't know if it can either, but I'm saying if it could be, would it be allowed in?
It might be something nice to...
The policy would allow it.
The policy would allow, but it might be something nicer just to, when the bench is there, is to get, I don't know if you've seen these, but the old horse granite horse pulls that come up, mailbox posts, but they make them for those kind of deals and then have that plaque put on that next to the bench.
Set it beside the bench.
Set it beside the bench.
Okay.
That might be, might be something, something if it can't be embedded in there.
Okay. But I'm just, I just wanted to make sure if it were determined that that's what they want.
I gave these specs.
Would it be allowed?
I gave these specs about engraving of everything to them. I don't know what Representative Nada or Representative Boyd is thinking about for it. I'm sure they must be in touch with you.
Yeah, well, we discussed it, but I said, you know, we don't even know if it's possible.
Right.
But I said, I just wanted to make sure that the policy would allow it.
Yeah, if it can be embedded, just as long as it's not gonna be, it's gotta be smooth. It's not gonna, somebody's sitting on it, it's not gonna ripple egg or...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Nancy arrived at 7:27.
I have what I think is one simple concern question, whatever. About the policy as it's being proposed to us. Section 1C, I'm sorry, Section 1D on page 2 of 3, for all other benches, number 4, ends with, or states if the donator doesn't, if the donor does not choose a location, placement of bench will be at the discretion of the town. And I understand the town, but should we be more departments of the town or like Conservation Commission, whatever, whatever? Or do we just wanna leave that up to, does it have to come all the way back to the council?
I think at the time of donation, you'll know whether the person is picking a location or not. And then when you, you'll know at that time. A donate, if they are not picking, say I'm giving a bench and I'm giving it to the Merrimack Conservation Commission. When it comes to the town council, you're gonna send it back to the Conservation Commission. You're gonna know at that time whether or not there's a location for that bench that the donor specifically wants or not. I'm just giving it, you know, a little bit more of a lead weight when I said that. The town, so that it's not geared into, the town council has to make the decision right then and there where the bench might be placed if it's going to Merrimack Conservation for Skalar Park, for instance, or for Horse Hill Nature Preserve, or for Parks and Rec down at Twin Bridge Park. So, it would be best location available. So, it would be, when, when it gets sent down to those other departments, that's the town. And I just try to keep it as general as possible, if that makes sense, so that the town council doesn't have to make the determination when they see the donation first come, the paperwork first come into the town council. Because that's where the paperwork comes in first, is to the town council. Town council reviews it and then says, "Hey, wait a second. This sounds like the conservation thing." Could get off to Merrimack Conservation to review for their recommendation.
So, in general, I'm to understand that prior to, prior to questioning the donor and, i.e. Conservation, Parks and Rec, somebody would have determined or resolved the particular location.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's very possible that someone comes in and says they wanna do a memorial bench and doesn't have an idea whether they want it at the park or at Abbey Griffin or at the conservation, right?
Right. It's possible.
I mean, it's very possible.
Possible. They just wanna...
And at that point, there'd have to be a discussion, as you said, right?
Right, with, with departments of the town to where it would best fit. You know, if somebody comes in and says, "I wanna do a granite bench," we're not gonna kick that off to Conservation and put it up at Horse Hill Nature Preserve. You might kick, we, council might not kick that off to Conservation, but they might kick it off to Parks and Rec. to Parks and Rec Committee and say, okay, we got this donation of a granite bench. You know, Abbey Griffin Park, where in Abbey Griffin Park? Where Watson Park? Where do you have anything at Twin Bridge Park for it? So I left it as, the reason why I use the word town and not town council is I try to leave it as general as possible.
Because I think the questions will be answered for the most part.
Should be.
Before.
Right. And we'll know if somebody just wants to donate a granite bench, we'll try to guide them to locations that granite benches are worth versus a composite bench that might be more suited for the woods or suited for a ball field area.
Right. Okay. I'm good?
Thank you.
Hi Nancy. In case I didn't say it clearly, Nancy, seven twenty-seven. All right, my pleasure of the council.
Can we move this to accept at this point? Move to, move to accept the modifications to the naming policy.
Second.
As presented.
With the size of diameter of the tree?
With the one change for the size of the tree, to two inches instead of two or three.
All right. Okay, motion by Tom Kaney, seconded by Lon. Any further discussion, seeing none? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Nancy, I wasn't sure. I wasn't looking that way, because.
No, I, I abstained.
You did, okay, yep. Thank you. Oh, no.
Can't believe that.
I don't think we don't. Yeah, it's not here. All right, next on the agenda, Dawn is not here, so we're gonna skip over number one. Yep, she'll be here. Uh, next, item number two under new business council to be presented with a new full-time position in the Parks and Recreation Department. They, it's day camp and after-school director. And, uh, it's gonna be added to the town's classification and compensation plan.
Correct. So during the budget process, Matt Casperius, Parks and Rec Director, uh, brought up the idea of a new program of bringing forward, uh, after-school program. And, uh, to have that person come in and be part of the, not only the day camp, but the after-school program. So it will be a year-round position, so there's some continuity with the position instead of bringing a part-timer here and a part-timer there and not talking, because some of the activities will, will be overlapping. So Matt's here to ask any questions, but, uh, wanted to say a couple of things. Is that this position is not being paid out of tax dollars. It's being paid out of the revolving fund one hundred percent. All benefits and everything is gonna come out of a revolving fund. If the after-school program, um, doesn't take off like we expect it to take off, we'll have to, next time, next year when we're doing the budget, we might have to modify the budget and, and, um, see what we wanna do with the position if, if that's the case. Um, but I do fully, fully believe that this position will be one hundred percent needed and take off, because the program will take off. Um, the other thing is, since this is a new position, I need the town council to, um, accept the position and to, um, put it on the job classification, um, scale, and that would be in the motion, it would be take a grade nine. For the grade nine of our pay classification scale, play plan classification. So that's where we, um, are putting this position, um, which is roughly, um, nineteen sixty an hour to twenty-eight dollars an hour. And once again, this is paid out of revolving fund.
Thanks. Well, the title listed in here is day camp and after-school program director. And put in grade nine with a bunch of positions that are labeled as coordinators, and most of the directors in the town are, are many, many levels higher. Is director really the appropriate title?
We could go either way. It could be a coordinator. We can make it after, um, day camp and after-school program coordinator. We can do that, because Matt is, Matt is the director.
Yeah, make it fit into the, into the area that it is a little bit better.
Good call.
And you didn't give us anything describing what the position does. You talked about it, I think Matt talked about it.
Matt talked about it. And Matt, if you wanna come up and talk some more, I do have a handout for everybody.
All right, good, good evening. So, let's, let's see, that's where we start here. So, yeah, so this, this position is gonna have kind of two primary roles, obviously directing the summer day camp, which is where the director part of that title originally came out of. And, and, you know, and that's overseeing forty-five seasonal employees. And, and everything that goes along with running the day camps and our teen camp and, and all of that, um, which are currently being filled by seasonal employees and, you know, we fill every single summer, you know? Um, the after-school program, which we talked about it extensively during the budget, um, is, um, obviously moving forward to starting new for the next fall, because we do believe there is a significant demand in the community. So this person will directly run that program. Obviously, it's gonna be supervising three or four or five employees. Um, and then things like the parents' night out programs that we already do, school vacation weeks, um, and those types of things. So their role will kind of shift a little bit as the, throughout the year. There'll be two, basically, like I said, summer camp and kind of after-school vacation weeks, that kind of thing, which then frees up James as our program coordinator to focus on younger children, teens, adults, which then also frees me up to do other things.
Um, anybody have any questions for it?
Do you see any reason why it can't be coordinator versus director?
No.
Okay.
Like I said, it was just, uh, it's always been summer camp director and, you know.
Yeah, you have a director reporting to a director.
Right.
Just seems a little strange. Plus you have your assistant recre, re- rec program coordinator at the same grade level.
Right.
Um, so it makes sense to, I think, keep them all together as coordinators.
I think it's gonna be a good program.
Sounds like a good deal.
Len, I appreciated your comment during the budget time, the budget discussions, uh, that there's the need that in fact there aren't enough, or those programs in the private sector are filled up and there's tons of people who are left out because of that. So this is filling a void that I think would be very good. We're gonna be pricing similarly to, yeah, not undercutting, so.
Yeah, no, we're based on what we're budgeting, we're, we're in the middle, somewhere maybe slightly high on the higher end, just depends. I mean, I don't know what they're gonna charge next, you know, most of those programs open up in April. So that information should be coming up fairly soon, but yeah, we're not gonna be trying to undercut anybody or anything like that. We're just an alternative. And, and as I said, we're starting with Thornton's Ferry School, because it's the closest and where we're likely to get the people. We do have to obviously charter a bus per school, so, um, if, you know, if this really takes off and we still have capacity, then, you know, potentially we could go to the other elementary schools in the road, down the road, but, uh, we've talked to the state, this will be a licensed program, even though we're municipalities are exempt from license, we're gonna opt into it, just like we do with summer camp. And so we've already talked to them and we're, are starting on that, that, that process for the application. So probably initially, we can have up to forty-five kids. I think we might start with thirty just to get organized and make sure we can get the staff to work with this person, then, you know, that kind of thing, and then kind of build as we go.
And, and the other thing that, um, Matt, when he was talking about where we're gonna be on the scale. We're not looking to make a, a bit on this. We're looking to cover costs plus a little bit for administration time and things of that sort to get the program running. Um, we're not gonna try to undercut anybody, so we take their, their, um, their, their revenues away. We're looking to supplement the need in the community. And, and that's where we're looking at, and we're not trying, like I said, we're not trying to charge a thousand dollars for these, but we wanna at least cover some of our costs with it. So it'll be a little bit higher, because this is a new program with all the startup costs and, uh, and staffing and things of that sort, so.
It sounds like a very well-thought-out program and, and I look forward to seeing how it all plays out. Hopefully you can find the right person to fill that position.
And the pleasure of the council?
I'd, uh, move to approve the position in the Park and Recs Department and to be added to the town's classification and compensation guide as grade nine day camp and after-school program coordinator.
Somebody, Andy Hunter, seconded by Lon. Any further discussion on the motion? None, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go back to, um, item number one under new business. Council to consider the confirmation of the appointment of Dawn Twamala as the new public works director pursuant to Charter Article Seven, Section Eight. Hi Dawn. Um, at February, we, the council had Paul bring in, I should let you, you wanna, I was gonna say, Dawn came in and met with us, um, was it two weeks ago now? I can't remember the date. And, um, of course, we all know Dawn from her work with us previously, so it was a nice, easygoing conversation. And, um, so she's here tonight, because that's part of our charters, we have to do that confirmation process. So, sorry, Paul.
Um, as, as the committee knows, that, um, Kyle Fox, the previous director of the department resigned from an opportunity elsewhere. And we were on, uh, looking for a replacement, uh, position for the director. And I'm happy to say that Dawn Twamala would have loved to come back to the town of Merrimack and be the DPW director. I'm very happy that she has accepted the job and is willing to come back. I just didn't know how much stuff she was gonna bring with her today. So, uh, she came back and asked if she could get into her office, and I said, sure, do you need any help? She goes, well, a lot of hands makes good sense. So I figured maybe one or two. I made like six trips and there was five of us. She had her whole car filled with stuff, pictures and everything. I said, I didn't know you had this much stuff. But, uh, no, Dawn, Dawn is, uh, is happy to be here and we're happy to have her, and I think, uh, she'll do great things for DPW and the DPW department. She comes with a wealth of knowledge of the town, um, you know, understands a lot of DPW avenues within the town, because she was the engineer for so long. That she knows streets and she knows people and she knows the issues that are facing us and what, what we need to do. And she can hit the ground running, starting Monday. And actually, we're lining up interviews for her deputy director, um, within the first week she's here, so that, uh, she can get that position filled. And like I told her, that's one of my first promises, is to get her help, because I don't expect her to run, you know, six different positions. Uh, because Dawn would do it. But, uh, we definitely, I told her that we definitely need to get her help in a deputy position and then we'll look at the MS four environmental position and then we'll also look at wastewater. So we do have some of those positions out and, out on the street to bring in some help for, for Dawn.
Very good. All right. Tom?
And I, I just wanna amplify a little bit, and I'm glad you're here tonight, Dawn, that Dawn has a very long resume. And, uh, she did spend, I think it was nine years in Merrimack as the assistant DPW director, town engineer, deputy, sorry, deputy DPW director, but also a town engineer, and she's done a tremendous amount of work for us in that capacity on reviewing plans and things of that nature. But if you look back in her resume, all the way from back when she did her initial drafting work or, or, um, surveying work and stuff like that, she's been in, uh, public works and, and exterior work and engineering, civil engineering type things for years and years and years, and has a lot of experience running companies, working with, uh, things. And so it's, it was an easy lift for us to, to ask her to take that position, uh, and help out Merrimack. And as you pointed out, Paul, with her vast experience with Merrimack over the past nine years or so, uh, it, it, it should work out very well. Plus she knows everybody in town, uh, in the various positions that she's gonna be working with. So I, I'm excited about the opportunity.
Uh, Lon?
Just to amplify very quickly on Tom's description of Dawn's resume. He mentioned surveying, and I happen to know that she was involved with surveying with a Merrimack company a long time ago, and I've kind of sort of known her.
Don't mention years.
That well, and I'm ecstatic that you're back.
It's great. Oh, yeah. Did she, let's move, yeah, we'll move to confirm and then I'd like Dawn to come up. Yeah.
So. Move to affirm.
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 I, I, okay, because I didn't read that in the charter, but.
No, it's to affirm.
Okay.
The decision of the town manager.
All right, because it does.
To make a motion to affirm the decision of the town manager for the hiring of Dawn Twamala, the director of DPW.
Pursuant to Charter Article seven dash eight.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, Lon, seconded by, motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Lon. Any further discussions, seeing none?
It's my pleasure to be able to do it, and I welcome you back. And, and do the vote first and then I'll say it again.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Dawn, if you'd like to.
And now I'll say it again. Come on, you can come up, bud. It's my pleasure to have been the one to do the motion. We welcome you back, and you just need to know that you have our backing, because we want you to succeed. And I know Paul wants you to succeed as well. So you, I just encourage you to make sure you ask for whatever you need. Because I, I don't know you well, but I think you would tend to do things without wanting to have extra help and stuff. You're gonna need to ask to make sure it's done, because that's a major responsibility shift that you're having too. Okay, so please make sure that we have your back, but you, you have to let Paul and I ask now when you need help.
Thank you, and I really, really appreciate this opportunity to come back. I am excited. I'm scared to death at the same time. It's a big responsibility.
Yeah. I have great confidence, so I'm not, not concerned, but I agree with Nancy. Can you, you need some stuff? It's, it's an easy move, so.
Thank you.
All right.
You're eighty percent there already.
Failure.
Because you know the people and you know the place. You know the environment. You know the history, which is a lot of it. You've been involved with a lot of the history of a lot of the things that have gone on in the town. So that is a major institutional knowledge that you already have, so.
And failure is not in my vocabulary.
No, very good.
And it's not, it's never good enough.
Glad to hear that.
So, yes, but it's still, it's exciting and it's scary at the same time, but I really appreciate the honor and.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Great to have you back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lon.
See you.
We'll, we'll be seeing ya.
All righty. Okay, um, next on the agenda, item number four under old businesses, the town, uh, the council to consider council review and discuss the possible approval of the town of Merrimack's capital asset and depreciation policy.
So, this is basically a housekeeping item.
Right.
We've been following this plan that Tom's gonna present tonight for the eighteen years that I've been with the town. It was given to me by Bob Lavine, was my predecessor.
Standing new policy.
Who was doing it for the twenty-three years that he was finance director for the town of Merrimack. So we've been following this for a long time. The auditors came in and said, can we see your policy in writing to Tom? And Tom said, Paul? And I said, it's up here. That's what we've been following. It's the way we were taught. So Tom can take it from here.
What's surprising is that they haven't asked for it previously.
So he said to you, Tom?
Yeah, as Paul said, this really, I, I consider to be a, a housekeeping issue. Every year as part of the audit process, the auditors generate a letter opining on our, uh, internal controls. Noting if there were any, any issues there, um, which there were not, and as they noted, but, uh, they also, they like to come up with some suggestions of things we could do better or improve upon. improve upon. And this was what they came up with this year was to formally document this policy, which, as Paul said, has been in place and has been being followed. This this goes into a little bit more detail than what we had to follow on in the notes to our audited financial statements. So it might help us be a little bit more consistent with the way we apply the depreciation policy, which only really impacts that annual audit report. So not a not a huge deal, I don't think. But if if anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer.
So there was a lot of stuff in here. There's a lot of stuff in here that I don't understand realistically, or this is basically a policy you've been following, whether it was sketched out in notes or or not, and over the past 40 years or something like that. Is that right? I mean, I don't recall ever seeing or reviewing anything like this before. So to me, it seems like a new policy, but
It it's a new policy because it's in writing for the first time.
Yeah.
But we've been following this policy.
It it's been reflected in the in the notes to our audit
Okay.
every year. It describes our policy with regard to fixed assets and and how we depreciate things. But we didn't have it in the form of a an official town council adopted policy document. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. And so an ambulance is considered a light vehicle? Or something, I mean, it seems like lightish. It's lighter than a heavy fire truck.
Right.
Heavier than a light.
As compared to a dump truck.
Well, yeah. Anyway, so I, so that's great. I'm glad we've got this. And I'm presuming it it all makes sense.
We have to trust.
From a from a depreciation, this is all standard accounting depreciation kinds of
Yeah, there's definitely nothing out of the ordinary in what's depicted here.
So what's depicted on these layouts of years for depreciation and and this? The National General Finance Officers Association comes out with recommendations for stuff like this. And really, that's where Bob LaVanne took it from way back when. Going forward, these are, these are national standards of government finance officers. So we didn't pull out, pull out some of these things saying, oh, we're going to depreciate a building improvement for 40 years. It's a national
Yeah, I figured that was national. But but unlike in in four, the policy table one talks about land improvements, inventory 10,000 capitalized, 10,000 depreciate, yes. What do those three categories mean?
Basically, it means it it's got to be, the purchase price has to be over that threshold of $10,000 for us to to even keep
Itemize that way.
An itemized record of it and record it as a as a capital asset on the audited financial statements.
Oh, okay.
And we depreciate everything except land, basically. Because everything except land theoretically has a a useful life over which you should spread the cost
Yeah.
in the form of of annual depreciation charges.
So if you don't mind my asking, what's the difference between inventory and capitalized?
Inventory means you're tracking it and you're keeping a list of of assets that you that you have. And and whether you dispose of them down the road. Capitalized means you're actually, instead of recording it as a an expense on your financial statements, you're recording it as an asset and and then depreciating it
And depreciating.
going forward. If 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 an item would be less than $10,000, that's all going to be just expensed immediately and not not capitalized.
Capitalized. For instance, a flagpole is a land improvement.
Pardon?
A flagpole is a land improvement.
Probably not 10,000.
Not $10,000. So we'd expense that. But if we did
But an antenna or
A flagpole with benches and seating and landscaping and things of that sort. That might be over $10,000. We'd capitalize it at that point. If we made like a little park and put a flagpole in the middle, that would be land improvement and we capitalize it if it's over $10,000. That's that's what it'd be. Or if it's like a like an antenna, yes. Most of like vehicles we buy now are over $10,000. You're not going to get a vehicle for over 10.
Right.
Okay, and the part of the reason this is a little confusing or might be confusing to people looking at it from the outside in is is the whole concept of depreciation really only exists in our annual audited financial statements. If that's, it's not a budgetary accounting concept. You don't budget for depreciation. You budget for what you're actually going to spend in the year that you're going to spend it, even if it's for a capital asset. But when we put together our annual audit, we have to follow generally accepted accounting principles, which say you have to separate your capital assets and put them on your balance sheet versus your income statement. But it it only really exists in that annual report that we give once a year.
Because we do not file a tax return.
Because I didn't hear that.
We don't, the town does not file a tax return. If we file a tax return and we paid federal income, federal tax on it, then this would be depreciation would be significant. But since we do not file a tax return for a municipality, it's only used in our financial statements. And when we go to bond, they like to see the age of our buildings and assets and things of that sort.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I get it. And I'm reminded why I'm not an accountant. I'm just a All right. What would the pleasure of the council be?
I would like to move to approve the capital asset and depreciation policy.
Second by Andy Hunter, seconded by Tom Kanning. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
That's on the agenda's minutes, but I just, I do this every week. I start stacking and no, I don't need the minute. I have the minutes. I just didn't have my cover sheet. So, but for the dates.
February 16.
Your minutes are right there.
Yeah, no, but I didn't have the agenda, so give you the date, but I didn't look there. So anyhow, for February 16th. Thank you, Tom. Okay, February 16th.
Fortunately, it's a shorter agenda.
Oh, my word.
Boy, that's so funny. I have no idea. Okay.
Because it stared me in the face. That was the point. Andy?
Move to approve the minutes of February 16th, 2023.
All right, Tom?
So it says at the top that it's a special town council meeting? Wasn't this just a regular town council meeting moved to a different date?
Yes. You know what? It probably got caught from the previous minutes we had corrected. Remember, we were doing the budget.
Yeah, we had budget meetings. Instead of calling it a town council minutes, we called them budget meeting minutes.
Yeah, I would agree with you. There's really nothing.
They're not, it's not a special
Was it a special?
per se. Unless you have an argument with that.
I I don't have an argument, but I know, I think I, I don't want to get in the minute taker's mind. But we moved the ninth of February's meeting
To the 16th.
16th. And that's why we called it a special.
Because it's not the norm.
It was not a normal on the week. It really was a town council. It was the town council meeting from the ninth. The reason why we moved it was because of the public hearing. Instead of having a meeting on the ninth, the 16th, the 23rd.
But it was still a town.
I agree, but it was still a regular council meeting that we had decided to move, like we're going to do in April. We're going to consolidate the two.
Yeah, you're right.
And then on page two and line 21, it talks about changes to the third reading consent agenda. I was just offering that we should put a diagonal slash in between there, the third reading slash consent agenda, just to be easier to read.
Yep.
Line 21. That's all I noticed. Barbara's not here, so.
All right. There's no further changes. Call the question on the minutes. All those in favor of the February 16th minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? And I'll be abstaining. So it's five zero one. Next is February 23rd minutes.
Move the minutes of February 23rd is prudent.
What's my, Tom Kanning, seconded by Lon? You have no changes? Well, good.
I didn't have any changes.
Right. All those in favor of the February 23rd minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Nancy, I'm sorry, I didn't see on that side. I've gotten a bad habit this evening, looking to the right. So it's five zero one with Andy Hunter abstaining. Comments from the press? Seeing none? Comments from the, oh, yes.
Sorry, on page two line 10, the appropriation is for $500,000.
So just a little there.
500?
Did I go through the formality of rescinding that or just take it as a friendly amendment to the vote that was just had? I don't know what's appropriate.
It's a typo there. Technically, because a motion was taken, there would have to be a motion to reconsider if you're doing everything. However, it's a correction to make the number proper. I would just say that
Correct the typo.
To correct the typo. It's to correct the typo.
So we're good.
I I believe you're good. If somebody wants to challenge it, then the minutes later on.
We can redo it.
We can redo it, yeah. All right. Thank you, Nancy. And I was to no comments from the public. There's nobody here. Comments from the council? None? Lon?
They're waiting for you, Lon.
Sorry for the delay. I make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion by Council Wood, seconded by Tom Kanning. In that there is no discussion on that motion, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Thank you, everybody.